Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. DeGenova?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Our first item of business tonight is the court and municipal court. Timmer?
You'd like us to approach? No, no, it's at court.
Page seventy-one and ninety-seven.
Should we excuse Mayor Riggle?
We can do that now.
Okay. Motion to excuse Mayor Riggle.
Sorry. The motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes. Motion passed.
Well, we've given you our numbers and we gave you what we consider the brief metrics. I think we're different than some divisions of the city where we can't tell you price per case or price per defendant, but what we try to do is give you an accurate view of what we do every day. And it really is like taking a snapshot of a moving train. Some days you'll look at our dockets and you're like, oh my God, how are they going to get it done? And then everybody comes and please. And other days, we don't get it all done in the eight hours we have scheduled and we end up staying late. We are growing in some areas and receding in other areas. The main differences you'll see in our numbers, we did turn a part-time position into a full-time position on the court staff side. That is a court assignment commissioner slash jury commissioner. Our part-time commissioner Rita Boham is retiring at the end of the year, so we took the opportunity to turn that into a full-time position. We also had to replace, at the end of the year, we were hoping to put it in the 2017 budget, took it out before we could, but to replace our magnetometer and our X-ray machine that were, we think, as old as the building, if not older, and they broke. Certainly, that was a safety concern and those had to be replaced immediately. We are continuing to upgrade our computer systems, what we call the jab system inside the courtrooms, which allows us to keep the dockets and to keep the hearings in a manner so that they can be, A, stored properly for all time and retrieved at any point in time to make transcripts for the record on appeal or the record down the road if anybody should want. I'm going to, you know, if you have any questions, please ask. And I think Clerk DeGenova also has a spiel she would like to give you.
Vice Mayor Schaefer, members of City Council, Mr. City Manager Tom Homan and the rest of staff, thanks for having us tonight. We look so forward to coming every year and giving our little budget presentation. In the seventeen budget, a couple changes I have is that I have, we're going to add a PC administrator, so like a help desk technician. With all the programs that we have, Nick Lockhart, who is our Court IT Director, is pulled in numerous directions and unable to keep up with the, and he really shouldn't be doing, hey, the printer won't work, hey, I need to have joined with City IT in sharing, and I know that Governor Kasich, one of his big things is sharing services. And this year, we were finally able to enlarge our, Scott can probably tell you better, but we basically got a new internet provider for the court building, the justice building. And that will also be utilized, or is being utilized, well, first, it's, again, joint task between City IT and Court and Justice IT. And we're going, that internet service is going to provide city departments that are downstream of the justice building, so Prosecutor's Office, Police Department, Public Works, and then go. And the big thing this does is that if, you're still using Time Warner, correct?
That's correct.
If Time Warner goes down, they can switch over to Frontier. If Frontier goes down, we can switch over to Time Warner so that we have dueling systems, so to speak. The main reason that we invested in this new internet provider is because I'm going to put, we have our records online, but I don't have my documents online yet, and that's something that I've been trying to do for the last several years. In order to do that, the easiest way, and I may have said this last year, Nick said, we have this much internet service, we need this much internet service. So we now are getting this much internet service. So that I'm going to do in stages too. So the added bandwidth, we're going to first start with the judge's staff and allow them to view the records online, and then the prosecutor's office, then law enforcement agencies, then local attorneys. Criminal traffic will only be permitted to be viewed if you have a login. With identity theft and that kind of thing, if ever, if you folks have ever gotten a speeding ticket or know what a traffic ticket looks like, it has everything. It has your identifiers, your date of birth, your driver's license number, the last four years social, and I don't necessarily want that, it's available, it's public record, and you're welcome to come into the office and get a copy of that. I just don't want to put that out on the internet for everyone. But I do want law enforcement, prosecutor's office, defense counsel to be able to have that information without having to come to the court. The civil cases, all of that documentation will be available online. It does not have those type of identifiers when there's a lawsuit or money. So as I said, we're going to, in the coming weeks, we're going to start releasing that little by little and making sure that we don't break anything and it all goes smoothly. The other thing that that added bandwidth allows for, one Judge Gormly was here, and it's up to Judge Hemmerman or Sutterman if they do this, but one thing that we talked about is allowing OSU to have a fee again. They had utilized that in their courses. Another thing that we finalized is the building security, added the panic alarms throughout the entire floor. Bailiffs now have radios to monitor and have media communication with Dellcom now. And finalized the migration from the lock and key to the fob entry. So all of our doors are now fob doors. That includes the elevator and the two rooms we have in the basement area. Another thing that I did is, I had a estimate for, we still have our large books that we used to write in, and I had an estimate on those, and the first estimate was a hundred thousand, then it was down to thirty-six thousand. So I've taken my part-time individual, and she is scanning the majority of those in, so we will not be spending that kind of money. However, our scanners aren't big enough for the huge books that we have. So those I am going to have to send out, and then we can get rid of those books and not have this. And all of this is in an effort to eventually become paperless. It's going to take us a while to get there, but, you know, to take these steps to get there is what we're doing. Another thing that I did last year, and it paid off this year, is I helped with Delaware County Bank, and we helped Beta and develop Positive Pay where, and I believe Dean, the city uses that too. And what it does is, it doesn't, anytime we write a check, we download every evening, every check, the number, the amount, that type of thing, and submit it to the Delaware County Bank. They will not cash one of our checks unless they have that on record. Well, lo and behold, someone took a witness check of seventeen dollars and changed it to almost seventeen hundred dollars. And they have attempted to cash this check three times, but we have avoided that happening because we're doing this Positive Pay. So I'm very proud that we were the first ones with Delaware County Bank to do that, not the first ones to have fraudulent checks, but I'm proud that we were able to help develop that program. Another thing that I have on my budget is possibly the hiring of another, one other deputy clerk. I have struggled with this back and forth. It is not something that's going to happen right at the beginning of the year because one of my employees recently took a position with the judge's staff, that jury assignment commissioner position. I have replaced that individual, but to have too many in training at once does not get me any farther ahead, it just actually puts me behind. So that is something I do have in the budget. I am struggling with that. I don't want to hire another person, but I really feel it's probably necessary if we continue to grow the way we're going. So that's what I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
What about your stories downstairs?
Well, that's one of the reasons that we were doing the scanning. We are full. We are to the max. I could actually get rid of year thirteen, fourteen, because we have, we started scanning in twelve, but not the whole year of twelve. But it's hard for me to get rid of those records yet. I need to check with the Supreme Court. Still, in the rules of superintendents, it states that the medium for copying is microfiche and microfilm. We have talked to the Supreme Court through the Clerks Association, which I'm currently the president of, the Ohio Association of Municipal County Court Clerks. My term begins in May. And we've talked to them about that, that rule needs changed. All of our forms are on PDF. I don't know whether you're aware of it or not, but all OVIs and domestic violence, I have to keep those records for fifty years at this point. And so I need to just verify with the Supreme Court that a copy of the judgment entry of sentencing is as good as the original judgment entry of sentencing.
Chief would like to have some space down here, wouldn't she?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bruce. That is not going to happen. I think eventually that Judge Hemmerman, yeah, Judge Hemmerman is looking at adding additional probation officers, and there is no room on the second floor. So we're going to have to start putting staff downstairs eventually at some point.
We're going to visit with you and discuss.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do want to highlight the probation office. I mean, it is a hard working office, and we lost Mike Keller, and we now, we moved Doug Stogler up. We did hire Luke Leatherman. However, when we started looking at the numbers per officer, I think we were all kind of astounded at the numbers that they had. I talked to some probation associations, I said, oh, two hundred for a municipal court officer is plenty, while on average, our officers have two fifty to three hundred. We also have an intensive docket, but it gets passed out between the officers equally. And we are seeing, I would say, an increase in what I would call the intensive cases. These are people who are recidivist or people who commit crimes like stalking, domestic violence, or a jail term they're going to get, but they're also going to get probation where it requires more face-to-face, more GPS monitoring, more SCRAM unit monitoring. They just take more time, and for good reason. We're going to continue to monitor that. At this point in time, I'm not looking to come or add into our budget the cost of an officer, because those costs will eat a budget alive very quickly. We are going to explore some grants. I am exploring a veterans' docket, because what happens when you have a veterans' docket, and we do have on count thirty-five veterans on probation currently, and some of them are the more intensive cases because of the PTSD issues they present. What we are seeing is with a veterans' court, you get a veterans' justice outreach personnel that will come to court and alleviate some of the work that your probation officers currently do. I don't think it's going to cure everything, but it's at least a step in the right direction. And there are grants available for offices like ours. Again, I'm very cognizant that grants aren't the answer because they come and they go, but I certainly am aware of the constraints we have fiscally. I think the need will eventually present itself, or perhaps we look at how we staff the intensive probation defendants with what I would call the one and done. Eighty-four percent of our cases are one and done. They are on probation once, and we never see them again. So maybe if we can fine-tune what gets the one and done, maybe we can save our efforts for the intensive. But we're not there. We just started catching the numbers when I became judge in 2015. So we now have a year's worth of numbers to really look at. That's what's going to fuel grants. I'll keep you posted, but we're hoping to look at grants before we look at hitting our budget. Yes?
What's going on with the court costs statewide? I know they were talking about...
There are suits everywhere. You just have to be, one of the things we struggle with, obviously, is we are funded by court costs and taxpayers' money, a mixture of both. We understand this. There are some concerns about court costs. Are they fair? Are they equitable? How are they done? I mean, these are all broad constitutional issues, and the ACLU has taken a certain stance on some court costs. Because of the pending suits, Judge Sutterman and I did take a look at our current court costs. We think we are right in line with what we can ask for. We think the number is in line. However, we saw two changes that we are going to make as of January first. We are no longer going to charge defendants for a jury demand. That's a constitutional right. We were charging people every case ten dollars for it. We think that would be an area of litigation, and I did have some defense attorneys who I know are plugged into this issue raise their concerns to me. As a judge, I looked at it and said, you know what? There does seem to be something wrong with charging somebody ten dollars to exercise their constitutional right. I think I'll avoid the litigation. We also currently charge twenty dollars for every continuance. We looked at other courts throughout Ohio, they're all over the place, and that's a cost that is justifiable because it does cost money to call off witnesses. However, based on what we found, we are going to lower that to ten dollars a continuance. And again, these are not because of budgetary concerns, these are litigation constitutional rights. These are concerns that a judge considers outside the realm of how does it hit my budget? And in fact, one of the things Judge Sutterman and I constantly say is, I can't even consider how it hits my budget, because soon as I start making decisions about court costs and how we run this place, I can't make my fines based on how much money I can bring in. I have to do what's fair and equitable for the case. And that's where the, you know, these are where these lawsuits are coming. So when we took a hard and fast look at it, we made decisions in those two areas. There are other areas of concern that have to do with, you know, bond decisions that are being litigated, especially up in Cuyahoga County. If you go to the Supreme Court website, there's a running article on what's happening in Cuyahoga County. We looked at our bond schedules, we don't think there's an issue, we think we're fair. We think we've laid out in cases what bond should be and how we calculate it. And we are one of the few courts, if you look around Ohio surprisingly, that do bond hearings on Saturdays. A lot of courts don't. We do. So there are areas that could be of contention, but, you know, trying to anticipate those, we've made some decisions that will affect the bottom line. There's no question, cutting the court costs, in some cases, probably twenty dollars, will affect the bottom line, but we don't believe drastically to the point where we wouldn't be able to pay for the things we do. But those are decisions we've had to make, not because of just the bottom line. And I hope that answers some of the concerns.
Based on the court costs in that discussion, and I always ask the clerk, how your collections have improved over the years? I know at one time, they were like a million dollars.
Well, there were no collections, nothing went to an outside agency until 2008, when I was elected and came back in. Currently, I'm working with three different collection agencies, and I'm kind of monitoring those to determine, I had two, and I brought on a third one, and I'm kind of determined, looking to see who I'm getting the best bang out of my butt for. I don't know that I would just go with one, because I think there's, it's nice that there's competition there, and they know that. But we are collecting monies that we would not have normally, that we wouldn't have collected prior to 2008. Another thing that I do want to point out, City Manager Homan and Dean, I talked to Darren about this, and I can't tell you why, but for years and years and years and years, anyone who is subpoenaed on a city codified ordinance by the city of, city police department citation, when there's a witness, we pay witness fees to. Anyone other than Delaware police officer cited under Delaware codified ordinance, I get reimbursed from the county. It is in my budget to pay these folks, which it really shouldn't be in my budget. It should be in the prosecutor's budget or in another budget. A couple years ago, we had someone traveled from Florida, and I spent twelve hundred and eighty-one dollars, 2015, it was five hundred and seventy-six. Every year, I budgeted about a thousand dollars for that, but I really think that's something that should come out of mine. And Darren and I have talked about this for the last couple years, and I thought, I'm just going to bring it to council, because it's not been put in his budget. It is in my budget again for this year, but I don't necessarily believe that's a cost that the court should...
One thing we have tried to do to address this situation is I've kind of addressed my staff and said, look at your case and look at how important it is, and maybe consider not subpoenaing somebody from Florida for a fender bender. You can write them a letter that says, hey, we're doing your case, if you'd like to come up, you're invited, but at some point, it's not worth the inconvenience.
It's not a murder case or...
With the technology, let's be clear, the courts do have the ability to, and they're, they've done it in bigger counties where if a witness is far away or for some reason is unavailable, you can take testimony via Skype. I mean, do we want to do it in every case? No. But we've done it for victim impact statements, even this year in the municipal court, because we had a victim's family who was in Australia, and there was no way any of us were going to be able to pay for that out of our budgets. So we use Skype. The same thing can be done for witness testimony. It gets trickier. You have to plan ahead, the defense attorney has to be available, and the defendant has to be available. But there are things that we can use for technology that will help for some of this. But again, it is an area that is only going to grow, and it's an area of concern.
Let me just say this too, that normally, if it's a jailable offense, the city police department cites under state code. Therefore, if they go to jail, the county's responsible for that, any fees associated with that, the county, defender, all that goes to the county. These are cases where it normally is a minor misdemeanor, a fender bender, that kind of thing. And witnesses get a big six dollars for half a day, twelve dollars for a full day, and then I pay them, according to statute, it's fifty cents a mile. So it's not a lot of money, but it is something that we have to budget for.
And it also ends up being a lot if they have to drive. So we looked at one, and it was cheaper to fly, but technically, the code said it was per mileage, so we were trying to work out to buy them a plane ticket and kind of make an agreement with them, but part of that is managing on our end too, to keep that down. You don't need to do that for a fender bender, but on the one where we Skyped, I think it was a dead...
That's where there was a...
Did you have a wrong side?
Well, it was, it was, it was a boat.
The boat, yeah.
Yeah. On Alkirk.
But we're seeing more and more of those cases. I mean, your stalking cases, let's be clear, the defendant can be in Delaware City, Delaware County, but the victim could be in somewhere else. But we had jurisdiction. So these things do cost money, and again, somebody has to bear the price, and we all, I came from a system where it was paid differently through the prosecutor's office. So it's just something we have to anticipate down the road.
Can you go and follow up with that?
Well, I, I had as one of my things in my, in my budget this year, but there's just so many things, and my budget's like the smallest, so it just ends up being a, I think we've seen that the conversation earlier than budget time, because it doesn't, it's harder to explain when you're not.
He put it in, Joe, it was cut.
But I mean, it's, I mean, one hand, it's where all the cities, so it's, it's getting paid, whether it's going to move that line item to city versus there, but we've worked well on lots of projects. Cindy's office has helped us with our billing, our tax cases, the technology on the e-tickets, they've been very helpful, Nick's been very helpful to our office. So I, I don't, it'd be okay to move it over, but at the end of the day, it's, I think we're working well together on a lot of issues, and we don't play silos too much.
Speaking of e-citations, the sheriff's office, Powell Police Department, and I believe the city, Bruce, you're looking at that too?
We're aware of it.
You're aware of it? Okay. Well, at, at one point, they, the state was offering printers for cars too. So I know that some of the local agencies were going to take care of that. So the more and more, it's, we're going electronically.
It saves paper and time, because now we can go in and log in on the computers, thanks to what Nick set up, and we can look at the highway patrol, is that the only one?
Yeah, it's the highway patrol, and they can, Nick has set it up that you can search by arraignment date, by name, by ticket number. So every day, we download a file to, well, several times a day, because we get downloads every two hours from the highway patrol, and we put those in a prosecutor cabinet so that they have that information available. They can print it, they can look at it electronically.
We used to get, every day, get a stack of papers this high, and then our admins would have to go through and alphabetize it so we could actually use it, and it, I think it wastes a lot of time, so it's much more efficient for everybody.
Yeah. Any other questions? I think the only other thing that we have is our benefit package.
It's on for second reading tonight.
Okay. And are there any questions about that? I think the only things that we changed that I'm aware of is the judge's office added the assignment commissioner, jury commissioner position. I changed the wording, it was assistance administrator for life insurance, I changed it to Court IT Director, because that's what his title is now. And then we changed the benefit for the parks credit from fifty to sixty to go with the rest of the city. I believe the city did that last year, and we weren't aware of that, so we're changing it this year. And I don't think there were any other changes that we made in it. Oh, I guess the holidays, they spell that out, because, because it's usually, if it's Saturday, it's Friday, if it's Sunday, it's Monday, but with Christmas being Monday next year, perhaps spell those particular dates all out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me?
They need to be online.
Oh, Mike.
I've been asking that since February 2015. It's going to happen before February 2015.
Well, can I just say that that's something I've worked on for the last couple years? It's not something that I haven't tried to do, but we weren't able to do it until we were able to get more computer bandwidth, or internet bandwidth. It just could not happen without that, that process. So we are working, and you will each, yes, you will all...
Just make sure you get your passwords, so you can get in.
You and your office can contact me. Be happy to help.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You guys have a nice evening.
You're not going to stay?
No. I would be happy to, but these guys got it covered back here, I think. Bruce?
So we're, this is continuation of our work session from a week ago, Saturday, and we provided you some additional information. Some of this was part of the conversation about the city's financial situation, and there's a, there's an information there from Dean, and there's some additional background information regarding golf, which I included. I didn't know how you wanted to proceed tonight, Vice Mayor Schaefer, but we can, there are a couple of areas that we didn't have a chance to talk about. Some of these are minor in nature. I think the bigger issue really is part of the discussion we had on Saturday in terms of the capital improvement program and possibly wanting to amend that, in light of, in part, the announcement that Morpsy has made regarding federal funding, federal and state funding for the point. I've asked Bill to be prepared tonight, just to kind of give council an overview of how that works, but that really, that's out there, it needs to be discussed. And there's some other areas as well that, that I wanted to discuss, but obviously.
Where does everybody want to start? You know, quick presentation on the Morpsy project?
Yes.
Bill, do you want to maybe come up here? If that's okay?
I guess what I can do is just recap what we've been reading about in the papers and tell you from my perspective where we are. We have been notified of three funding sources approved for this East Side Congestion Point project, as well as additional funding for our traffic signal project through federal tribal funds. With the Morpsy, with the point project, we are being recommended, and it's under public review now, to receive eleven point six million dollars, which was our full request for that project, which will be about thirteen point two million dollars in 2022. They've inflated that. And that funding is for construction of the project, so it'll come to us in 2021, 2022. We've also been recommended, and we expect to see very shortly, the track draft recommendation for major new projects, and our project, we've been notified through Morpsy, is included in that for additional million and a half dollars. And then the third funding source, and I just got this this afternoon, the official announcement through the state, is the state safety funds for additional three million dollar recommendation for our project for that. So all three of the funding sources that we applied for are, have seen the importance of this intersection and are prepared to provide us these funds over, over a timeframe. What we need to work on is they all come with their own sets of requirements. Track is twenty-five percent local match. the project jump started and going through planning, engineering, design. The Morpsy funds are all at the end of the project for the construction. There's still a gap in funding, obviously in there in the local. We have to plug that gap wherever it is. The biggest gap is in construction. That's still several years away. We have opportunity to apply for additional track funding and work with additional partners to try to close that, close that local gap. Up front, we're working strategies to minimize the amount we have to invest immediately to get this project off the ground in the first and second quarter of this upcoming year. We're calculating at this point somewhere between $300,000 and $600,000 will meet our total local obligation to get us through the planning, design, and into the right-of-way process.
How much do you need?
300 to 600,000.
That's what you'll need in 17?
That's what we'll need to enter into a contract, into a contract with a consultant by the end of 17. And it'll take, the majority of 17, it will take to program this project through the state, through the funding. The majority of funds, technical funds through Morpsy won't really be official until spring, until April, when they do the annual or quarterly tip amendment. We'll have the amount of money in there. Track funds and safety funds will be available sooner, but it'll take a long, it'll take, it'll take several months to get through the federal process to get a consultant interviewed onboard and a contract signed. But at that point, we need to be comfortable, ready to, to have our local share as part of that contract. And so there's a couple of scenarios we're working through right now with both track, with Morpsy and state safety to see if we can minimize our local contribution upfront down to the $300,000 figure. That would mean having more of the safety funds upfront as opposed to the track funds. So we're working with all the individuals, seeing how we can do that. The good news is we're trying to figure out, do we spend our local dollars right up front or do we spend them, you know, a few years down the road or towards the end? We have to spend local dollars on it. Would like to be able to jump right out of the gate this year, get the project moving. So there's some level of local commitment required for this project. And so that range right now, I think is 300 to 600,000. Real similarly, the, the signal project received 2.5 million guaranteed 100% funds through Morpsy tributal funds, which means we have no local match, but that's for construction only. So we have to pay for our design element of that. Either way, we're going to pay for, either way, we're going to pay for design, whether we receive 2.5, 3.5. Those monies are also available in out years, but we, again, we can enter into a contract even that project, we know that money is coming in once in April, it's assured, and we can go ahead and borrow and get that project going too. So the sooner we can put our local monies towards the design, we can start that process on our, our comprehensive traffic signal evaluation and design and get those things implemented in relatively short order.
What kind of local money are we talking for that?
Again, we were, we were estimating around $250,000 to $300,000 of local money for initial contract.
And what was the match on the, the construction money?
On, for the signals?
No, for the point, the 13.2, what was that?
But it's an 80/20 program and we, you know, until you know what the final construction is, you don't know, but it's 80/20.
Or a magnitude, it could be five to, five to seven million depending on.
Right now, we're.
That's why we're looking for the.
The applications were based on our best guess with the preliminary work we did and we've got nearly $4 million of contingency in our application guess because we just were at no level to say with any confidence, this is the exact project cost. Or this is the very specific nature of the project. Once we are programmed and get through the initial purpose and need statement, we have to look at and rule out, there's, there's a different way to do this project other than what we're proposing, which is the expansion of the bridge. So there will be some looking at, is there an alternative road configuration or should that, would the bypass traffic, we've completed that information through Morpsy the last two years, is that a answer to reduce all the traffic and get rid of congestion? I think we already know that the answer is probably no, but this process has to go through that, all that information and document it and say, no, this is the appropriate place to expend this money would be on this bridge. If it's not, then the process will say, there's an alternative that we can consider. And the money doesn't go away because of that, it just means that there's a, there's a more desirable alternative. But we put forth an application based on what we thought would be a good alternative and that's what both the track and state safety believed also after they heard the information. So that's how those two projects really come together. We will be in a position probably in January to have answers on safety funds or track funds can be readjusted a little bit as to what step of the process we decide to put that money into. And then that will tell us exactly how much match money we need in 2017 for that contract, engineering contract side of it. And then with the other capital project adjustments we'll need to make, we'll be able to bring back that package completely. So here's all the changes that we're looking at for these projects. Certainly, these are the two biggest ones. We've never had 18, 20 million of federal and state dollars to have to program for a major transportation project. So it's a good problem to have. It's also very fortunate now that we're in a position that we could come up with that local matching dollars to get both these initiatives in full gear this first year. More than anything, I'd say the agencies, I'd say please, if, if you're going to apply, we're going to award you, keep the projects moving forward and on schedule because there's a large need out there. And again, I think I reported there was $193 million of requests and only $70 million is being handed out onto very few projects. So we'd like to, we're in a good position to keep it moving. We'll have a much better idea in the next probably four weeks to six weeks of the very specific needs of how we, how we can spend those dollars and the specific requirements to go with it and be able to bring that back to you.
Looks like at minimum, we're talking a little over half.
Correct, correct. And that'll meet our local obligations for those major projects.
I think it's important to, to point out, especially for the, for the record and for the public, that the levy had it passed would have obviously made our ability to come up with the local funding less of a challenge. It's going to be a challenge, but this is a project that I think we've all identified as a, is a high priority for the city, really for the county, for the region, and that's why we made the application. And we're going to have to take a look at all of our resources. And obviously, to the extent that we are, if we're not able to, we don't move ahead with the levy or ultimately, that's a decision that the council has to make at a, at a subsequent meeting at some point when we talk about it. But this is important enough that we have to look at all of our other funding sources, including our, our local dollars that might otherwise go to, to other, to road programs. But we had, we talked about that before. The question was asked, what happens to the point project if the levy is not successful? We're, we're faced with that situation right now, which is in the short term, it's manageable. The longer term, you take a look at those construction obligations that we have, that's where it's going to get, it's, it's more expensive on our, you know, our local match goes up and that's why obviously having additional funding dedicated for transportation would make a project like this and other projects more, more manageable. On the heels of this project, we also are looking at that entire East Central quarter because one of the discussions that ultimate, that comes up when we talk about the point congestion is what are you going to do about East Central, the condition of East Central, the congestion in East Central. And there's, as you know, we spent a lot of time talking about this. That is a project that is, is large in terms of dollar wise, is probably this project. So, and it's another project that would be eligible for these attributable funding dollars in the future. But, so anyway, it's just.
Yeah, we are, I mean, we were very successful with these first applications. Again, there's many communities didn't get any money. What's could be really important is we're, we're really, we really need to continue to put these applications in every two years. So what that means is we need to show results with, yeah, with the funding that we, we do get. And that's one of the criteria within the application process is where is a community's ability to make good on the funds they've already received before they're, before they can get additional funds. So it's a new position that we're in that we decided to get away from getting the dedicated stream of money and be competitive. And I think we've shown already that that was the right choice. It's, it's already showing with the significant monies we're getting. And now it's time to really sort of rubber its road on this project and the, and the signals because we've got the majority of funds in our hand. And now we have to say, is, are these projects that important, even if it means stripping some of the other projects for a year or two? And I don't think we're in that position because where we are bottom line revenue wise, we don't have to do that, even if we did. And I think Chris asked that question in one of the meetings earlier in the year. What if we don't have a levy and, but we get funding? Are we committed to moving forward on this project? This is as close, I think, in my 22 years, I've ever seen the ability to address issues out there at the point. So it's an exciting time, I think.
Moving forward, I definitely think, you know, we have the egg in the basket and we need to move forward on this. Morpsy's a state, counties participating. What steps can we take to go to the federal level? Are there any steps we can?
The tributal funds are considered the federal level, they're just managed through Morpsy. That's how the regulations work. We would like to get additional partners. You mentioned the county, the county could be a partner in this. They, they back the project, they've written a letter of support for the project, but obviously Andrew Holland and myself would like to have deeper discussions with the county in terms of programming, maybe some support over the next five or six years for this project because it's such a significant entrance way to not just the city, but the county as well. And so as well as any other partners we can find on the project. So we do have the federal level, the state safety funds, and then track, which is a regional state program. And the, the competition to track is as significant as locally in the Morpsy district because we're competing with all projects in the state. So even the $1.5 million award is significant in that it's minor in the amount of awards for track, but it's really significant in that, that, that track sees the importance of this.
Well, I guess, you know, I'm trying to keep up with the change in the administration on the federal level through Pat Teaberry's office. And it's exciting to know that they want to pass down to the municipalities, state government and the municipalities, more dollars for federal funding for infrastructure and roads. And I think we ought to keep abreast on that and see if there's any more monies that we can get for us to match.
I think, Joe, I agree with your point. One of the things we've just heard, just slight rumors about.
It's, yes, it's the stages right now.
There could potentially be programs over the next, in the new administration over the next few years that could be similar to like an AER type program or a TIGA program that, that puts more federal dollars into infrastructure. It's definitely based on those who have partnerships and strong partnerships, specifically with, with private. Also shovel ready is going to be really critical on these things. That's why I can't emphasize enough, getting, going, you know, jumping ahead on these projects right away and getting out, getting under contract and starting is going to be a key across the board over the next three or four years for a number of reasons. But if another program comes available and our project is far enough along that we can call it shovel ready, then potentially there might be a big gap filler, federal funding source out there. So we'll be ready for anything, but from our perspective, it's going to be, let's move as fast as we can in this project to take advantage of those opportunities.
Any other questions, Bill?
So you at least have an idea of, of one of our thinking stardust right now. It's an obligation. Thanks, Bill.
Yep. I think carrying on with conversation on the levy, I think we're probably going to have to have a session in January to have a, just something dedicated as to, are we going to go forward? I don't think in 17 or in 18, you know, maybe fine tune it more differently and have further discussion on that.
I'd really like to get feedback from some of the opposition about exactly what real issues are and what we take to satisfy some of those concerns that we start, maybe a better position.
Yeah. No, I was, I was just going to iterate again and kind of what, you know, that all these funding sources that we've, we've been able to get these, these matching funds and what have you, that, you know, all this was in play long before the levy ever existed. And I know that listening to some public sources, they're like, oh, well, they didn't get it, so now they're finding this other money. So I think it's really important that, that our residents understand that we were, we were hoping for, and luckily we did receive these, these funds that we've requested, but this was not in response to a failed levy. This was in play long before even we, we started the whole levy initiative. That and, and it's really critical, if we're able to get $4 return, $4 of value for every dollar we put in, I mean, that, that, that's a no brainer, you know? We can get 80% of our costs funded for anything. I think that, that really iterates why it's important for us to elevate these type of projects above other projects which are not mandatory in nature. Because I, I don't think you can get, find a better value proposition out there. If, if we are, I'm willing to listen to it, but otherwise, I think this really needs to be our top priority. Just, just building on that, just for council's information again, these attributable funding application process happens every two years in the even years. 2014, we were just coming off, coming out of the program where we were designated with a certain amount of money because we became part of metropolitan area. That's when we went into the attributable funding program, you'll recall, led, council took some action on that. So we weren't going to wait until 2018, knowing what we know. So again, that's just, supports that. Anyway.
Tom, did you have some other?
No, I just want to, it's really up to council in terms of how they want to proceed. We've got about 10 minutes until your, until the meeting begins. I don't know if there was any, you know, there's definitely some, some things we can, we can walk through, but obviously it's to you. Chris?
I'd probably take a break myself, so unless you get some, you can do quickly. I don't know what we can do in 10 minutes.
Yeah.
No, I just, we can change capital improvement anytime in the first quarter.
Yeah, our plan was to.
Budgeting time, so.
Correct.
That, that can be fixed. And the only other thing was the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that really is, we had some good discussion about that on Saturday. It's a dollar ticket item and.
Only two items I had was if we do capital improvements in January, February, and then the comprehensive plan, which we put off for how many years, we've got to decide, are we going to spend money or are we not?
What, just, so you have a couple of minutes and there's something that won't take long. Page 94 is the community promotion fund. I just want to make sure that that is consistent with the recommendation that was made. Jackie, was that a month or so ago in response to various requests? I just want to make sure we didn't review that at the meeting on Saturday, but that again is consistent with what the recommendation of the committee was.
Did the historical societies submit their application on that?
They did.
And are they inclusive in here or not?
No, they're, we sent out a paper email regarding the, sorry.
We sent out an email regarding the, there were a number of groups that did submit and did not qualify for what the committee felt was really a truly a community promotion. Those are groups that are not going to be awarded after council passes budget will receive a letter explaining why and be notified of next year's availability of funds.
That's that. Under, on page 114, the parking fund. We have a, under professional services, this is where we paid for the consultant that helped us with the parking study. We have $15,000 in there for next year. We don't know if we're going to need that or not, but that's in the event that there were some recommendations that came out of the work session later that we're going to have next month. We've got some funding here for, for those services if we, you know, if we felt we had to use the consultant in any other, in any other way. So I wanted to point that out.
Has that meeting been set up?
You know, I, I lost track, Jackie. I haven't asked Jackie.
Is it Saturday, like the third Saturday or something? Like the third Saturday or something?
There, there is a third Saturday. I, we had yet to land on that date for sure.
They were having some problems, too, with the consultants.
They did. They would have to divide up their team. Lisa Keller had recommended maybe we use February 6th, which would be a work session evening. Wanted to throw that out.
Monday 6th?
Yeah.
Monday's okay.
She had, she had recommended that as a work session and I just, I was, I was waiting for your consideration on that to see if council would like to try that.
6th?
Mm-hmm.
As of now, it's from me, the 6th of January.
February 6th.
February or January?
It's really up to you guys.
February.
Maybe it's a Friday.
Friday.
February.
No, February 6th, Monday, that's our normal work. That's your work session.
The 6th.
Just cautious of making Saturdays a thing.
Yeah.
Um.
Like 6th of 6:30?
6:30 if that's all right with everyone.
They won't be here, so.
They won't be here.
No, they're busy.
It's really, however you would like to move forward, it is going to be difficult to get everybody here. So I'll leave that up to you, Ken. I'll work with whatever scheduling you feel is necessary and we'll work with the consultants.
Yeah, that's, my only concern is that they're not going to be able to be there on that Saturday in January.
Right.
Would you mind checking with them about the 6th?
I can do that right now. Absolutely. Sure.
I'd like everybody to be there, but at the same time, we, we just keep pushing it back and before long, we're all going to.
Pushing out the door.
I'll over again.
Anything else, maybe? No, I can, I've just got a couple of things that I can do that when we reconvene.
Is there a move to adjourn from the parking for the budget workshop?
Yeah.
Return at 6:52.